Praise your Father in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the blessings you've given us. We thank you for the city of St. Petersburg and its people and the college that's in it by name. We thank you for the faculty, the staff, the students of St. Petersburg College and its importance to its community, this community, its importance to life. Father, we pray that you will bless us this day, give us discernment, bless our legislature and our governor, Father, just give them discernment, give them wisdom, give them this mindset of first do no harm and then to take care of education, to take care of our students, to take care of our college. Father, God bless us and keep us, forgive us when we fail, we pray this in Jesus' name and death.
Amen. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Comments? We'll jump right in, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do have some comments today. First of all, let me give the board members of Dr. Law a little token from Nelson Mandela University in Africa.
Thank you.
Well, we have an exchange partnership and they want to grow their programming with us. And I ask Rebecca to ask the students that went to the exchange program this time around, they could not make it there in Cape Town, they emailed me last night, and they are, as we speak, probably sleeping. But tomorrow they'll be going to Robben Island where Nelson Mandela served 22 years in prison.
Wow.
Life-changing experience for some of these students in Midtown and other parts of Clearwater and Big Carpen Caves. So, all I can say, I want you to just know that our study abroad program is alive, it is one of the best programs that they have. We need to continue that in the direction that Dr. Law is taking. And I ask that Rebecca, I would ask Rebecca to bring those students next month so they can share their experiences inside that. Secondly, Dr. Law, man's been on a church tour here lately, many of you know, but two weeks ago, Dr. Law received the first Hope Education Award, helping other people every day in the nonprofit at First Baptist Institution, which Dr. Thompson says is pastor, and the first honoree in the education award was Dr. Law. And so you should thank you for that, Dr. Law, and he got a standing ovation and a round of applause and was awarded the Hope Award. And then I hear this past Sunday, I was out of town working, but now he's got a preaching license, they tell me. I've had several members of our community say he went back to First Baptist and he was the education speaker on last Sunday and did excellent jobs. So, I don't know how he's retiring, because now they're about everywhere, it seems like he's lobbying for a new job, I just hope it's here in St. Petersburg. So, Mr. Chair, that's my report.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to thank, I ran into a couple of weeks ago at the brewery, of all places, our leadership, St. Pete College crew, and had a great time getting to visit with them outside of the normal four walls of our institution here. And it's great to see people from the college, in the community, doing normal day-to-day things and getting out from under the work environment. But wanted to thank them for coming by, we had a great tour and talk and conversation. Thank you.
It's nice to get out, have a conversation over a little IPA.
Mm-hmm.
What's wrong with that?
A little pale ale.
Yep, absolutely. Well, thank you for the hospitality of the Allstate Center. This particular facility is near and dear to my heart. It's probably the facility that, as a councilman and mayor, I spent the most time in. Whether it's fire graduations, police academy, or community meetings, this seems to be the magnet. And Allstate, this particular center is a beacon in the community and offers facilities at any time and offers assistance to the city of St. Petersburg. So, thank you for your hospitality, thank you to the staff, and I really, really appreciate this facility very much. It looks great, it's good to be back. Mr. President?
I have very short comments. First of all, thank you for arranging your schedules to join with me to go to Tallahassee this week to sort of do some very focused lobbying on things that are of importance to St. Petersburg College, I hope they're important to the entire college system, but the time has come for us to make sure our needs are front and center. So, we are confirming, literally by the end of today, we'll have, or early tomorrow, we'll have the schedule put together, it's very fluid in Tallahassee, so we're on one day, we're off one day. But we will be there to meet with senate leaders, house leaders, to talk to them about our particular needs. So, thank you for checking that out. Secondly, our basketball team won last night, they're in a great state of play. Yeah, they bring great credit to us. I, as one other part of my career, spent the entire week out in central Kansas, it was a very long week. Spring hasn't happened there yet, so they'll do fine, we're very proud of them.
They're in the National Junior College match.
Yes, this is the top of line for the league we play in. So, congratulations to Coach Carmody and all of those students. So, we'll have them come by too, we're very proud of those students. We'll have time and energy to represent the college and we were sharing, you know, it's been a journey to get students who can represent us and to play good basketball too.
We challenge anybody hard, athletic programs of the game.
That's exactly right.
And we see the benefit of that.
Well, you know, let's hope for the very best. But they'll represent us well, you know, we're adults, we understand what's in place. So, that's what we have for us today. We have a good meeting with some good information, not a lot of hard decisions in today's meeting, but wanted to bring everybody up to speed as we get set for the budget stuff.
I would have had Dr. Law on the record.
Yes.
When I spoke to President Nagler, he will be meeting.
Thank you very much.
I want to say them publicly, so that he can't get out of.
Well, he was kind enough to say yes at first, and then late last week, he called and there was some, he's got a bunch of other schedules.
The schedule, I guess they're attending Thursday, he was trying to go home. So, I pressed upon him that he did not go home and be with the St. Pete College Board checked before he takes home.
Good, so we will get it. He's the person we really want to see, to talk to, and he has a smartest heart at St. Pete College, and he'll be a friend of mine too. He's a tough guy politically, but he's a friend of the college, so he'll be there. Thank you for doing that.
No problem.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir. Any public comment? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion, all in favor, if I may say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Board attorney.
I have nothing to report, despite a busy week.
Very good. Anything else?
Good morning, I have nothing to report.
Strategic Focus and Planning, Student Success and Achievement Workforce Update, Dr. Jason Crupp.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Trustees, Dr. Law. Dr. Crupp and I are going to take you through where we've been, where we are, and what we're doing in the future. The first slide will show you the Workforce Institute and our enrollments in the different industry sectors. The healthcare sector is doing very well, our clinical medical assistant program is up and running. We had 10 students in that cohort that you see the picture of right there, all 10 of those were offered jobs. On the right side, you'll see our Active Shooter Conference. We hosted that right here at the Allstate Center, thank you for all those that helped us on that. As far as information and innovative technologies, the group with the blue hats there, the certified production technicians are from Salvation Army, they're in the Adult Rehab Center, and so they came to St. Petersburg College to get trained, and then they can get a job in manufacturing when they complete the program. And then our unmanned aerial systems, or drones, as the laws continue to change, we keep updating the curriculum. Our business and finance, we reintroduced project management and entrepreneurship. When labor laws change, you need to update the curriculum in some of those areas. And in supply chain management, we've had 614 enrollments in that. We visited the port of Tampa, which is the largest port in the state of Florida, and that was a real, that was a real good meeting we had over there. And then we have 3,132 students have participated in those. Next, you'll see the industry certifications, licenses, and continuing education units earned. If you look at the total for FY 2017, you'll see that we're already ahead of last year's pace, and then you can scroll across to see how many of those received industry certifications and licensures. The next screen is where we're going, the new workforce initiatives for the upcoming year. Cybersecurity is huge, those information infrastructure libraries and data analytics, those are all growing and it's not slowing down. Then you see our unmanned aircraft systems and the updates, the entrepreneurship that I mentioned, and project management, we came up with fundamentals, but agile certified practitioner is the hottest thing in the market right now for project management. And then, of course, digital media with search engine optimization and we, and then instructional design, instructional technologies, certificates that we're creating. All of this information comes from Region 14, which is our targeted occupation list, so we study market trends and Burning Glass and the other Department of Labor information to come up with what's new and what's hot.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Law. Now, I'd like to turn your attention towards our graduates from programs in the workforce area, the baccalaureate, associate in science, and certificate and academy programs. On the screen, you'll see two bars next to each of those areas. The first bar, the dark blue, is the total for last year, the number of graduates, and then the medium blue is the where we are this year so far with the fall graduates. So, in the first two categories, bachelors and associate in science, we're a little bit ahead of last year's pace, we've got about 150 more graduates in those two areas, total certificates. We're a little bit behind what we did last year because of auto-graduation last year. We went back and found students who were eligible to graduate for several semesters, and you'll hear a little bit more about auto-graduation later this morning. And then police and fire were about even with where we were last fall. Industry certification, our testing, we're a Pearson View Certified Testing Center, and if you would like to see it today, it's right out the door as you walk out. We moved from the EpiCenter where we had a capacity to test eight people, and now we have a capacity here to test 20, 21 people at one time. So, we've hired a full-time coordinator, she's in place down here, along with another part-time proctor to help with facilitating those tests. As you see, the first column there shows how many were earned in each of those categories last year, and then this year so far, we are already at 112, just in the fall semester, I'm sorry, as of last week, we've got 112 who have already gotten certified. So, we expect to clearly have a significantly higher number of certifications in these areas. You'll see a couple of the growth areas down at the bottom. The largest area of growth we expect to see is in the supply chain management, we've got eight new certifications created with the industry, three last year, we're going to have probably at least 20 for this year as more students are enrolling in that supply chain management track of the, in the College of Business. And this is the licensure pass rates, mostly in our clinical, in our health education center programs, also in our academy programs. This is something to be proud of. If you look at the column, 2015, 16 pass rates, you see a few hundred percents, a lot of 90s and 80 percents, but the key here is, if you look at the next column over, national state average, in every program, we're higher than the national or state average in pass rates. So, kudos to those in the health programs and in the academies. This next slide illustrates some of the tools that we use in career services. As you see in the first chart there, everything from assessment to placement, we have a tool for every category and in between there, and helping students prepare for entry into the workforce or increasing their essential skills or soft skills in those areas. We've rebranded, if you look at Career Launch, Burning Glass is the name of the software provider, but we've rebranded that tool to be more intuitive to students, and so it's now Career Launch, Your Path to Employment, and that's where we have businesses who are posting jobs and internships directly for our students. And as well, it also spiders out and identifies jobs that are on the web, thousands of websites. Up at the top right, you can see some of the career services webinars. So, our career center teams have about a dozen workshops that they facilitate on campus, and they've also recorded those online, and they've created about a dozen webinars. You can see from last fall when we had 900, we're now at 2,100 webinars viewed by students. And this is largely in part of those being integrated into the courses, so instructors are making assignments out of the webinars and tying them into the curriculum. Our internships continue to grow, our internship numbers, you can see in the chart, we're increasing steadily. We expect to have a little over 2,100 students enrolled in internships and work-based learning courses this year in total. Over on the right, you'll see a photo of one of the more recent initiatives, this is a student intern from the College of Computer Information Technology at the Geek Bar in St. Pete Gibbs. I think we had four students this semester, this is an initiative they started last summer, and they've provided services to students, these are paid internships, and they provide free services to students, helping them with their computers, removing viruses, installing software, helping the computers run better. A lot of the internship enrollment is in work-based, is in workforce programs, but we also have students like in AA taking psychology courses every semester at Pinellas Safe Harbor. I believe we have about 20 students who are volunteering there and helping with the intake process of the clients there. So, this is some lagging information on the placement of our students in workforce programs. And you can see we're around 90% placement, either continuing education or employed in field in every area, associate science certificates and bachelor's degrees. And this is more recent information, this is self-reported information on students who are graduating this semester. So, we did include associate arts degree as well as the workforce programs, because we do have, we see in continuing education column, if you look at that column in the middle for AA, 58% of the students are reporting that they're continuing education. So, this drives us to do a little bit more work in this area, because this is intended to be a transfer degree, so we have some more efforts to make in ensuring that the students realize that this is intended to transfer into a bachelor's program. The key here is, over in the right column, those who are requesting job search assistance, all of those students are being assigned to a career services team member on campus, and they are helping them with their job search efforts. Any questions?
Yeah, I have another question. So, Tom, come on in, you saying the panel board, the board, they're for?
Yes.
I just thought I'd chat to go with my hand. Secondly, how, I see the framework that you put here is good presentation, but my question is, how many new companies have we engaged in terms of growth? Because there's always emerging trends in industries that are coming and new companies that are moving in. New people go into the workforce, not only for our students, but just in general from the county to go to work immediately, that's, that was my first question.
The only number I know that I can give you right now, it's on the top, there's 540 different companies that are involved in our advisory boards. I know that I have to give you those other information.
So, maybe from the last year, how many new companies we've engaged in the last year, that's what I'm asking, I want.
Okay.
That we've engaged, that we're in partnership with, that have moved here in the last 365 days that have either been engaged, helped train, or get some of our students to the program. Because the Raymond James ones and all those ones that I've seen, those are pretty programs that we've been traditionally doing all the time. So, I want to know if we're engaging with new people that come in so that we are the first people they know. We should be the first line when somebody comes in in terms of a company and training their people to get them to work. We should be the very first people they see. And I, I'm getting this directly from when I was in the governor's mansion that day, Dr. Law, the first thing he said to me is, companies come to St. Pete College should be the first people they see, because our students are usually ready to go to work by the way, in either part-time or for. The second thing is, the rates that, I mean, you talk, the passage rates, so does your department, Dr. Conley, help these folks pass this exam, or has it been done internally to like, for example, you have the nursing staff who educated the dental, is that Dr. Carr's department, or is that, I know you have a testing lab, so have they utilized that, is that, is that in the deal?
No, most of the health, the health programs are not currently using our testing lab, but the certification, we do have, we offer test vouchers to help fund those certification exams, and we also have test, we have test prep as well, sessions, and we also provide study material.
What percentage of students, I'd like to know what percentage of students that are, all the programs utilize the test prep?
Okay.
And how we market it to them.
Okay.
And then, I think my final question was on this last page here, when we talked to, where it went way down, we were talking about the passage rates and placement rates, and then when we got to this last one, workforce and baccalaureate placement, we're at 91%, and then when we get to graduating student placement, we're at 24%, 41%, 35%, 32%, 40% out of these certificate programs, right?
This is the slide you're referring to?
Yeah, the last one.
Okay. Okay, yeah, these are self-reported student, the students who are about to graduate, so they're still in the pipeline with us and they're about to go into the workforce. So, this drives our efforts on campuses to ensure that students are getting the services they need to find those jobs.
Okay, but are we putting them in there, are they going in their field, like for the associate arts, I would take that out, because that is truly what you said, it's purpose to go walk to the next step.
Right.
If you have a job in the interim, that's fine, but when you bachelor of applied science, 35%, you've got to place better than 35% of folks that have, that are getting bachelor degrees, you need to get them right in the workforce. What kind of, what kind of time will we spend over there on the front end to make sure that they are being placed with, and I know there's another step in this, the career councils or whatever, but what kind of time will we spend with them to push them into like a science field or a bachelor of science and applied science? Certificate programs, I would assume, I mean, most of these folks are either probably coming from a job, right? And so, what are we doing to push them into the certificate area, especially if they're looking?
You've just asked a lot of questions, I can answer. Mr. President, should I answer?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just, what we do is, for the testing, is we have prep exams for just about every one of the certificates that are offered. It's up to the students to, you know, sign up and take those, and then it's self-reporting. Our test center here isn't the only one that you can use. So, the ones that are using our test center here, we can track the continuing education units, all the ones that attend our conferences, receive continuing education credits in the nursing, mostly the nursing, but it could be any number of healthcare professions. As far as when companies move in, I work closely with Mike Modell, we do presentations before companies move in. Just last week, Dr. Crupp and I sat in a meeting with a firm from Texas, and when they approach us, we don't know what company's thinking of moving here. All we know, these attorneys are from Dallas and they're looking at land usage areas and ways they think they can move their company here. And then, as they move here, I'm notified by Pinellas Economic Development, and we're immediately on the phone calling them. We did the presentation for Bristol-Myers Squibbs, we did Johnson &amp; Johnson, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of land over here in St. Petersburg, they moved to Hillsborough because of the amount of land that they needed, but we were instrumental in that, and they wanted to see all our degrees, they wanted to see all our certificates, they wanted to know how many graduates we had in all the different areas, so that they know what their employment would look like.
You do know that you can get all that information, you can have direct contact with the state, every company's looking to come to the state, that usually is a grant money or something, that's the offset.
Right, and we take advantage of Florida Flex, that's the old quick response training grants. We introduce the companies, because we manage that paperwork for Pinellas County, of any company that's coming in, and we get a Florida Flex, and then we help them fill out their documentation and write in the training that we can provide for them.
No, I mean, I understand you're talking about the tax incentive for the Flex and the grants, I'm talking about every company that's looking to come to the state of Florida. The state has that, can get it directly from them, they're looking at Pinellas County. We're one of those companies that they earmark to be an area that they may be considering, they tell them that upfront, so we can get that information, but we'll talk about it after.
Take a minute just to revisit your question about this slide and the placement, if I may. The, you mentioned the bachelor's of applied science and bachelor of science, the second to last column shows the employed in field, and they have the highest number that, right. So, they haven't graduated yet, but they're saying, this is where I am right now, and so in the next eight weeks, we're, you know, we've assigned them, they're working with career teams, not all of them are requesting job search assistance. The last column shows like the 35%, 32 are saying, yes, I'd like some help with that. So, we are pairing them up with our career center team members and making sure their resumes are polished, getting them involved in all of our job fairs and activities, and doing our jobs to, you know, match them up with networking and meeting the right people.
I agree, I was calling you Professor Crupp, my son watched that movie so much. But, I would like to see that number above 50% employed in field.
Okay, but before they graduate.
The unemployment rate, as low as it is, we should be putting people to work immediately, right now, in their field, unless it's oversaturated, and if it's oversaturated, then that's on the president.
Well, I think we've got, I think we've got, I think you're right, we all want it to be high. What you have is self-reported, so those are not all the bachelor of science students, a lot of them are already employed, you know, so if you ask them, they don't send in the response. These are the ones who are looking for work, is my guess, okay? They're kind of between jobs.
So, we're back, Dr. Law, I'm saying to the employed in field.
Yeah.
Right, and you see bachelor of science, you have 62%. Right, some of those, I understand exactly what you're saying, some of those are already working in their field.
But we have more than 149 are going to graduate, is my point.
Right.
We're going to have hundreds that graduate.
So, this is not, this is what they've self-reported?
Self-reported, that's what you're saying.
Right, 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 so. Is there a way to get that real number?
We'll know who's going to graduate, yeah.
Well, no, we don't know whether they're working in their field, they don't have to report that at some point.
Well, it's.
The same way they do that interview in the beginning, they don't do an exit interview?
It's optional.
No, but eventually we catch them in the state database, the wage earners database, so we know if our students got to an in-field job.
Right, so, yeah, the state.
See if we can clean up the report, I think.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Stone, Stone's side?
Oh, I, sorry, I have one question. And Mr. Gibbons touched on a few items that I had questions about, but going back to, you talked about Region 14, Department of Labor Statistics, and that's one of the ways we kind of reassess what's needed. How often is that assessed, and are you also looking at, obviously, conversations with some of these companies that we're working directly with? Is it every six months, is it every year? How often is it looked at, and how much are we able to tweak as we go along what our offerings are here at the college? Because, as you said, it changes pretty quickly out there.
Yeah, we're pretty responsive to that. It's, it's one of those things we check regularly. Career Source, Pinellas will give us money based on, for training of the students, based on what those needs are. So, we work with Career Source and we find out what they're offering vouchers for to do training, and then we put cohorts together to offer to those students.
Gotcha. And that list is updated annually, we just received from Career Source our application to be a vendor for the next year, so the next board meeting, you might likely see So the next board, you might likely see a kind of a consent agenda item that shows our application. But they just renewed the regional demand occupation list, and we're in the process now of mapping it to our programs and seeing where there are any gaps.
Okay. Mr. Stone, I met with Vice President Cooper yesterday, though, and we are, I signed off on a plan that would have us take a leadership role so that there were quarterly updates for workforce-related activities, where we would be the lead convener of quarterly meetings to say, what's changing? Where are we? Who's doing what? Be part of the whole deal. So I think we're feeling the same sense that you just questioned, that it needs to be a little more reactive.
Before you go, I'm going to harp on internships a little more, and Mr. Gibbons touched on that. But that is, I'm just sold on internships and the importance thereof in getting our students into workforce, into the workforce and preparing them. We're projecting 50 more students than we had last year, that should be 150. One statistic, though, I would like to see, and I would like for you to report on next time we do this, is, are the number, the growth of partners, okay? Not just students, but I want to see how many partners we have, how many partners we had last year, and I want to see more partners every year. So I want you to track and report to us the number of corporate partners that are taking our interns.
Absolutely.
And I want to see that on an upward trajectory.
That's exactly my point. We need to be increasing those core corporate partners every year, not only to put people to work, but to get a resume enhancer to our students. Good point, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. We can include that, be happy to.
Great. Thank you. Student Services Graduation Update. Mr. Fox and Ms. Christensen.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board and Dr. Law. I'm Dewan Fox from Academic Services. I'm here with Eva Christensen from Emission and Records, and we're excited to present some student success data as it relates to our graduation and completion transfer our students, as well as how accelerated our students are making it through those critical courses along the academic pathways.
So we'd like to start our presentation by showing the substantial gains that we've made in the last three years with the degrees awarded. We have, we are now awarding 27 percent more degrees this last year than we did three years ago. The largest increases have been seen in the areas of certificates and the Associate of Arts degree. Certificates in 2013-14, we awarded just over 700. Last year, 1,700. So we've more than doubled our degrees. With Associate of Arts, we've seen an increase of 29 percent. Significantly, our African-American students, 40 percent more. With our Hispanic students, 47 percent more. So these are some very large numbers that we're very happy to report about. There's two things to consider, or two factors that have contributed into these numbers. The first is a process called auto-graduation. Prior to 2016, graduation was completely student-initiated. The student thought it was, they were ready to graduate, or an advisor prompted them, they would apply. When we analyzed the data, we found two things were happening. First, students were only applying for their primary degree. Therefore, they would walk away with just one degree instead of two or three if they in fact qualified for additional credentials. We also had a cohort of students who literally would leave us without applying, even though they qualified, which was pretty amazing to me, but they did. So to address this, we reversed the model. Graduation is now completely college-initiated at the beginning of the term. We run a process, we identify who our candidates are, and thanks to the Board, we've also eliminated the application and the application fee, which was a perceived barrier for some. The second thing that's playing into our success are the introduction of academic pathways, which thanks to our Curriculum Services Department and the hard work of our deans and program chairs, we are now making sure that credentials are embedded within our AS plans. The example on the board is for our Computer Networking Associate of Science degree, and as you can see, a student who follows this pathway will earn two certificates before they graduate with the AS, and they actually also have the opportunity to earn four industry certifications. This does two things. It gives them a marketable credential while they're still enrolled, as well as gives them, and it prompts them to continue. We also wanted to take a quick look at who our graduates are. Every year Institutional Effectiveness conducts a survey of our graduate in class. So they surveyed over 3,000 students from the 2015-16 academic year. 75 percent of them indicated that they had in fact achieved their educational goals while with us, so we're very pleased to hear that. However, the one statistic that really stood out from the survey is how much our students work while they're enrolled. If you look at the number of hours baccalaureate students reported, over 67 percent said that they worked 31 hours or more a week while taking classes with us, which is pretty impressive. We also took a look at our alumni. So students who graduated in 2014-15 were surveyed, and this chart shows by program the salaries our graduates command when fully employed. 50 percent of our baccalaureate students are making over $52,000 a year, with 32 of our AS students in the same salary bracket. Considering the Associate of Arts is not a workforce-oriented credential, as we've discussed, we went ahead and looked to see where they are today. Does technology catches up with us? As we would expect, the vast majority do transfer to the University of South Florida. However, we did have a significant number also going to the University of Florida and the University of Central Florida. At this point, I also want to give a little plug for our new FUSE program, which is the two-plus-two guaranteed admission to USF. We actually have 800 invitations dropping in the mail this week for continuing SPC students to join.
So the next couple of slides and data we're going to share has to do with students' progression along their academic pathway. And I'm going to share what we've identified as early momentum. National data suggests that those students that are getting those courses done in the first term get two or three courses, especially those critical courses done early, will progress along the pathway and get to the finish line, as Eva just reported on those numbers. So what we're looking at here, we're looking at students that earned six or more college credits within their first term, and the cohort is those first time ever enrolled in college. In fall 2010, 47 percent of that group earned that six or more credits within their first term. Now, in fall 2015, 58 percent of that same cohort is now earning six or more credits. That's an 11 percent increase over that timeframe. If we look at those students that earned 15 or more credits within the first year, from fall 2010 to fall 2015, we went from 37 percent of that cohort to now 44 percent of that cohort earning more than 15 credits. And if you look at the critical courses, which are Gateway Math or English, those students that completed Gateway Math within one year in fall 2010 was at 34 percent, now 45 percent of that cohort is now completing that Gateway Math course within their first year. In the case of English, we went from 56 percent completing, now to 66 percent. So you can see the trend, upward mobility as students are getting through their pathways. Now, the last piece of that, those students are taking both Gateway and Math course, those Gateway courses, high enrollment. We put a lot of effort in making sure the safety net around these courses are there for students when they struggle. Last month, I think Dean Chang, as well as Dean Leopold presented that we're really focusing our efforts to make sure these milestones are required for students to get this, get those courses taken care of early on. In fall 2010, we had 29 percent of those students that completed both within one year, now we're at 41 percent. And we can see this increasing over the next term until the future.
So to just close out our presentation, we wanted to share some observations and action items. Clearly, with an overall increase of 27 percent, auto-graduation is working, and we expect pathways to have a significant impact as well. We do need to reach out and assist those alumni with degrees who are currently in lower-wage jobs.
And a third pillar here, as Eva reported, we have a large amount of our students that are working more than 30 hours while they're enrolled here at the college. Currently Senate Bill Two for performance funding, they're going to be looking at us to have a student graduate with that bachelor of the degree in four years. Our students, it takes a little more than four years. They're working 30-plus hours, they're really taking six credit hours, which is part-time student status. So we have to do a lot more work with our students to make sure they stay on these paths, as you can see we're doing, with putting milestones, courses in the beginning of that program path to help them get and progress along the path. Without that, that finishes our presentation. Is there any questions?
That's good stuff. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I know we've talked a lot in the past year about making sure students are taking the math and the English courses early on. What do you think has led to students taking more credit hours early on, specifically speaking to the six and over or 15 and over credits? Is that, is that because advising has gotten?
I think our college experience initiatives, helping students figure out their path early on in their career, has really helped students decide, if you're going to get this within this timeframe, you need to take this many courses early on.
So is that face-to-face conversation?
The intrusive advising.
Really laying it out for them, this is what, this is what needs to be done, this is what we recommend, and if you don't do this, you know?
Absolutely. I think that's exactly it. Also building academic pathways where they can see that information written out for them, laid out that way.
Mine are more towards comments, Mr. Chair. First of all, let me just say, this is an excellent report, Mr. Fox and Christensen, Ms. Christensen. Let me just say this. The innovation that I've seen in this is exactly what this college should be doing. When you talked about at every step, every step of this student's performance or career as they're going through the college, they could get two certificates, four certification programs. That's exactly what we should be doing. So thank you, Dr. Law, and the staff and faculty. It's a building block to something, right? The salaries is exactly what we should be doing. We should be producing students to go to work at a livable wage, right? They should be going to work where they can take care of their families and also be a productive part of this community. So, oh, Dr. Law, one thing is, I saw FUSE in there.
Yep.
But we need an articulation agreement with FAMU. I saw the president of Florida Memorial this weekend, Dr. Artis, she wants to do one, as well as Florida State. I, these students, and I know you're working on that, I'm just, I'm just giving you.
Yeah, no.
I think that is, I think we need to have these, our two-plus-two articulation agreements with as many schools as possible, because here's why. I was able to go on to University of Florida, but, you know, he got elected mayor, he went to St. Pete College. Right? But, but, but if Bill Law, if Bill Foster had gotten a letter saying that you are accepted to the 2020 class of University of Florida, right? He has something to look forward to, but you have to finish your AA at SPC first, right? So those agreements, I think, are important, especially these students all want to go to Florida State, Florida, and all those other places, they have to finish something, right? That's what college is about. So when you get, I know you've got a lot on your plate.
I want to follow up, because you've mentioned it a couple of times.
Yeah, no.
We've had staff-to-staff conversations with FAMU.
I know.
And we've got the details in hand.
Yes, sir.
And I am meeting with President Robinson Thursday afternoon.
Oh, great.
Okay, while we're in Tallahassee, I saw him, and we agreed to meet Thursday afternoon.
And finally, to this Board, this is my last comment. If, and I get these letters from people who innuendo writers, is what I call them. They won't step out of the shadows, and they say they don't want more of the same of Dr. Law. If this is more of the same, I want all of this in my next president.
Good stuff. Thank you. Great report.
Great, great job, thank you.
Ms. Hunt? Financial report?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board members, and Dr. Law. This morning's report will be first, the financial report at the end of February, and then the second part of this report will be the projected expenses for the end of this fiscal year. So first, looking at our revenue tuition, we're at $44.8 million, which is a year-over-year change of a negative 4.8 percent. You heard me talk in earlier months about the lottery appropriation coming in. We got our first appropriation of $3.3 million, so we'll see that each month through June. And then our student fees coming in, in line with our student tuition. Our total revenue at the end of the month was a little under $100 million at a negative 0.6 percent year-over-year change. So now, looking at our expense for our personnel, we ended the month at a little over $75 million with a year-over-year change of a negative 1.2 percent. Our current expense at $17.5 million, capital at 1.6, and our total operating expense at $94.8 million.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I just want to be sure I'm clear. When we do expenses, if it's negative year-over-year, that's a positive reaction?
That is a positive reaction.
Right, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure we're clear.
Right. So if you remember earlier in the fiscal year, we talked about, we knew that our enrollment was going to be down, and so we made some adjustments to our budget, and that's a reflection of what is happening.
Excellent.
Okay. So now, I just wanted to recap. Last month, I brought to you the revenue projections and where we thought we would be at the end of this fiscal year. So I won't go line by line, but I'll just briefly recap. We said that we knew our tuition would come in at about a little under $53 million, which is a negative 7 percent enrollment decline. And we also knew that the student fees in relation to that tuition enrollment would also be in line with that. So coming in at an estimated year-end revenue of a little over $144 million. So now, I wanted to show in the next slide how that is aligned with our expense projections. So back in December at the workshop, this Board tasked the college to look at our personnel budget and say, let's reduce that personnel budget by 2 percent. And so we wanted to act quickly, we worked diligently to achieve that goal, and we actually received a 2.5 percent reduction in our personnel budget. So looking at.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut you off. How did we achieve that, Dr. Law? We went through every position at the college, so there's a number that were vacant that got eliminated. They are gone from the budget, or they will be on June 30th, okay? And we identified any number of consolidations where there were OPS in multiple cases. It really was a very detailed review, Mr. Gibbons, and as you see, we identified 3.3 million for July 1 that is available to us.
Right.
Good job, thank you.
So as Dr. Law just mentioned, this current year, we expect to realize about $953,000 from that exercise, and next fiscal year, a little over $3 million. So we wanted to take it a step further and say, okay, how can we be more intentional in our spending and be more proactive? And so we looked at our current expense as well and said, how can we modify that? So we know at the end of the fiscal year, we typically stop spending around June and prepping for the next fiscal year. This year, we've proposed to stop spending a little earlier to realize at best $1.5 million. And then how that will affect our next fiscal year in our preparation of 1718 budget is we'll be looking at the student semester hours and where we budgeted there, and also keeping in mind from the workshop that we're going to lessen our dependency on the fund balance. So at the end of the fiscal year, looking at what we projected to be with the revenue at $144 million versus where we projected our expenses, we're looking at $2.8 million. If you remember in last month, that revenue stabilization reserve and the PO roll forward and accruals was part of that, that amount where we said we weren't sure where we would be until we finished the expense production, projection. So that's where we feel we'll be at the end of the fiscal year. So at the end of this month, for our next steps, we have our strategic budget presentation day, which will be March 31st. I'll come back next month, and we'll give you a report on the outcome of that day and also how that impacts our upcoming fiscal year budget. Were there any other questions? Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Personnel report?
Just click it, please. There's an action that needs to happen. I move that we accept a personnel report as printed.
Personnel report?
Somebody just click it, please.
There's an action that needs to happen. I move that we accept the personnel report as printed.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Second action item, annual membership assessment and Florida College System Risk Management Consortium.
That is the system-wide self-insurance that the Florida College System-
I move that we accept item D2, annual membership assessment and Florida College System Risk Management Consortium.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Let's see, Mr. Freitas, Honors Program update.
Good morning, Dr. Law, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to present on the Honors Program today. I'm Earl Freitas. I'm in my second semester as the Director of the Honors Program, and I served as the interim Director last year as well. The Honors Program at St. Petersburg College helps to create opportunities of excellence for our students here at SBC and beyond. Our students will leave the program knowing the importance of service, leadership, research, global awareness, while they take multiple classes together and build a truly dynamic academic community. So this morning, I'd like to take the opportunity to tell you a little bit about where the Honors Program has been, where we currently are, and what our goals are for the future. Our students in the program, when I started as interim Director, there were 114 students in the Honors Program. Currently, we have 211 students in the Honors Program, and our strategic plan is hoping for an 18 percent increase to 250 students in the program by the end of next academic year. We had 152 students taking classes at the beginning of the 2015-16 academic year. Currently, we have 193 students taking classes, and our strategic goal is to bring that up to 300 students by the end of the spring semester, 2017, 2018. We'll do this by, we are increasing dramatically our classroom visits and continuous info sessions on many of the classrooms or in campuses. We'll talk a lot more about recruitment in a few moments. Student involvement outside of the classroom, approximately 105 students were actively involved in the Honors Program during the 2015-16 academic year. We're currently up to a number of 160 students being involved, and our goal will to be have all 250 students involved in outside activities. Some of those activities include major events on many of the various campuses. At the Seminole Campus, we have our annual research conference. We have a global community event coming to the Clearwater Campus in April. At the Gibbs Campus, we have a 5K race, actually at the end of this week, and it benefits the Hope Health and Sunshine Cancer Charity, which is a local cancer charity that brings items to cancer survivors and patients who need them, they bring them right to their door. That is hosted by the Honors Program, Golden Key and PTK. We also have a Habitat for Humanity Build coming up that will involve all honors societies at the college, and we have student consortium meetings regularly where our students actually create and manage these projects. So they build the leadership right there by managing all of these projects and making sure that they go smoothly. Our research conference was held in January of this year. January 27th, we had over 40 student presenters and over 100 participants. From that conference, we award scholarships to our students. 10 of those students received scholarships to present at the state level, and 6 received scholarships to present at the regional level. And these are very significant scholarships because this is the first time that many of these students produce collegiate research. We had a student last year who presented and received a regional scholarship. Her name was Brenna Garcia. She put that on her academic resume. She's now at Cornell University. And Cornell University told her that because of the scholarship she received here at St. Petersburg College, she would be awarded an additional $24,000 to pursue her research there at Cornell over the year. So this is really exciting stuff. We strategically recruit and advise in three main areas. Pinellas County High School students, current SBC honors-eligible students, and our current honors students. Prior to the 2015-16 academic year, there was little to no high school outreach done by the Honors Program, so that is something that I initially wanted to fix right away. During the 2015-16 year, all honors-eligible Pinellas County seniors, students with a 3.5 GPA or higher, were invited to info sessions on four main SBC campuses. Pinellas County High School counselors were met on two occasions and literature was sent to all of the high school county, schools in the county. During the 16-17 academic year, all of the previous activities have continued, as well as honors program attendance at many high school college fairs, including Countryside, Largo, and then the Coliseum in St. Pete has a large fair for the private schools as Invitations to Pinellas County High Schools have become a lot more frequent and several classroom visits and dozen of individual visits have been occurring. Nearly every high school in the county has been visited with a goal to have far more classroom visits in every high school in the county. Current SBC honors-eligible students, prior to 2015-16, the Honors Program relied on a strong network of faculty referrals and interviews by the honors staff to recruit these students, and that was fairly successful, but we wanted to build on that. So we are now using business intelligence and we are inviting all honors-eligible students at the institution to our info sessions. We have at least 16 info sessions a year at the main campuses, Tarpon Springs, Seminole, Clearwater, and St. Pete Gibbs. We're moving info sessions into downtown as well, and we're getting some great reception This year, we've continued all of the previous events, and we have included two social media campaigns. We've added more signage and registration areas, and we're meeting with academic advisors regularly, individually, and on their campus meetings. For our current honors students, in the past, each student was met by the Director at least once a year. Last year, we began to give them individualized advising. The Honors Program Office is reaching out to each student at least once a semester. This year, we have brought that up to at least twice a semester. We contact students and advise them of what classes they need within their pathways, within their programs to keep current. And then after registration has started, we check on these students to make sure that they're following up and signing up for the classes that they need. As well, St. Petersburg College is a founding member of the Tampa Bay Honors Consortium, which is a group of St. Petersburg College, USF, University of Tampa, and Hillsborough Community College. We're working on Fuse agreements with USF and with University of Tampa, and with Hillsborough County, we're trying to share events as well. So any special event that any of the four groups have, all students will be able to attend. For example, University of Tampa is currently trying to invite Salman Rushdie for an author talk, and they have promised us a block of tickets. So any type of events like that, we're going to share. When I first started in the program, the average class size of an honors course was only nine students. The averages were a little bit lower in previous years as well. We had a plan to fix this in two ways. First, we needed to increase enrollment, which we are doing. Enrollment increases have been consistent, but still not enough to bring our class averages up, so we have been far more strategic in class offerings as well. The deans have been great partners with the Honors Program, scheduling one or two fewer classes on duplicate campuses. We're also able to look at long-term enrollment data and our students' needs to continue to get better and better scheduling classes so that we can get them closer to filling, closer to the 95 percent. Today, the Honors Program is getting stronger and serving more students. We are expanding to the downtown campus in the fall, and we're reaching out to our community and our community at large. Our graduates are leaving us with service, research, global awareness, and leadership skills under their belts, and they're being awarded great scholarships and admission to many tremendous transfer institutions. With that, any questions?
Good report. Questions from the board? Good stuff.
You know, Dr. Freitas, what is the requirements to be in the Honors Program?
The requirements are 3.5 GPA. Also, you can get in with a 120 PERC score as well.
So for incoming freshmen, they would have to take one semester of classes before becoming in the Honors Program?
Well, that is a possibility, but we're reaching out more, far more aggressively to the high school students because we want them to be there for the entire time so that they can get as many credits in their gen ed as possible. So an incoming high school student with a 3.5 who is not taking any classes here yet can get into the Honors Program.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Consent agenda, we have two action items.
Move that we-
Development curriculum.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as printed. Mr. Chair?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
We will move on to the presidential search update. Dr. Law specifically told me to tell you to just slow the process down.
Yeah.
Slow down.
We are moving at a rapid pace.
Oh, my goodness.
I would like to say good morning to Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. I am pleased to be able to provide you with an update on our search today. I think that we're, again, doing a fabulous job as a group, coming together and filling this very important role that's got a bar set really high. I did want to tell you that we have posted the position from February 21st through March 13th in the Chronicle of Higher Education and Higher Ed Jobs, Diverse Jobs, our SBC website, and of course with our search consultant, who is Dr. Jeff Hockaday, who is working very diligently on our behalf. And then at the close of the March 13th timeframe, we had 52 applicants. One of those applicants withdrew, and the pool was evaluated by a review panel that consisted of our search chair, Mr. Terry Brett, Dr. Hockaday, and then our FGO Chair, Dr. Rich Mercadante. And they were able to come to consensus on 19 applicants. And of those, we also had another withdrawal. So we are down to 18 applicants at this time, and their profiles are posted here on our search website. And I wanted to shout out to our marketing team, who's done a fabulous job with the website, very well organized and very impressive for our college. So we do have these here for transparency purposes so that our community can review the credentials of the applicants. Would like to also say that this afternoon, we are going to have a search committee meeting that's going to be at 4 o'clock at our EpiCenter Collaborative Labs. It is open to the public. Our committee is going to be reviewing the 18 applicants and hopefully narrowing that to about 10 semifinalists. Those semifinalists will be requested, invited to submit to us an eight-minute video that's going to be three questions that are posed to those candidates. Those are due back by April 5th. Our committee will meet on April 6th to evaluate those and then shortlist that down to our top six to eight candidates, and then provide that list to the Board of Trustees.
I'm sorry, I thought that was three to five.
Three to five.
Okay, we had three to five and four to six, so somewhere in that time range, I think that would be great. So the candidates will be invited for a two-day campus visit to meet with our faculty, staff, and students, and our community members, and also individual meetings with the Board of Trustees. After that, our committee members will then provide feedback from each of the candidates to our Board of Trustees, and that we are presuming, hoping, that perhaps at the May 16th meeting, that the Board will be able to make a decision on this elected president. And it's hoped to have a person named by mid-May, and then a new person start with us on July 1st. So we are sticking very closely to this timeline, and because we do have our committee that's going to be meeting again at 4 o'clock, I just wanted to reiterate then that we are looking for three to five candidates for that group to consider. And if I could answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think it's important to start working on the schedule for the finalists because you have to convene to interview those folks while they're in town or being interviewed by everybody else, and that's a bunch. I mean, if you have to do five individual board meetings, we need to get those on the schedule to move forward, so.
I hope it looks closer to three, but five.
Well, you know, I'm not judging.
That's fine, no, that's fine. I get it.
Six to eight sounded like more than anyone wants to do. That sounds, I think we can do better than that. We'll work with you to get those dates identified and get them scheduled, okay? So we don't know who the candidates are, but they'll accommodate us, I'm sure.
Sure. Okay. Any questions? Good report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moved our way down. Mr. President, do you have anything else for the good of the order?
Nothing further, thank you. I do want to say one thing. The items that you saw in Dorm Fox and Eva Christensen's information on associate degrees and that's the data we're going to take to talk to Senator Negron. His concern is that colleges who focus on bachelor degrees give up the other part of their mission. And I think we have very strong evidence that says that that's not the case at St. Pete College, and we're at the top of the list, so we'll be using that information.
And that those folks are working more than 30 hours a week.
Yeah, and he needs, there's still a huge misconception that we're in competition with students who are going to otherwise live in the dorm over at Temple Terrace or Gainesville or Tallahassee or something like that. And you look, they're working 35 hours a week a year. They're not going anywhere. They're mid-career adults, so thanks for that information. It's very timely. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Good stuff. Board members, anything else before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Great meeting.
Okay, good. Excellent. We'll see you again in April, leading adjourn.